Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are almost ready to begin this evening's board meeting. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or put on silent mode. We also ask you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special performance that we just had. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, we have been enjoying selections from the hit Broadway musical Little Shop of Horrors, performed by the students of the Idabaker High School Drama Department under the direction of Golden Apple finalist Sarah Jones. They were featured, they were a featured group at last Friday's Lee County Arts Walk, and will be presenting this musical as a whole on March 30th, March 31st, and April 1st. Can we give them another round of applause? I am pleased to welcome you to the March 7th, 2023 School Board Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM, and this meeting is called to order. We'll now take a brief pause to clear the performance area. Did you have one more song?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Please, one more song. Thank you so much. Again, that was the Idabaker Drama Department, and under the direction of Golden Apple finalist Sarah Jones. Thanks again. We would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential, and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, one item under information, public comment, consent-action items, which include two items under board office, one item under academic services, five items under business services, one item under human resources, one item under information systems, seven items under operations, one item under resolutions, and one item under attorney's recommendation, and four items under good-of-the-order other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Jordan?
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Giovinelli. Board members, it has been moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Giovinelli, please record your vote. The motion carries 7-0. Ms. Jordan will lead us in the invocation, after which Ms. Patrica will lead us in the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you. Good evening. Reverend Carlos Castor from the Pentecostal Church of the God of International Movement was to be here with us this evening, but unfortunately, he could not make it, so you are stuck with me. Please bow your head. "God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, and wisdom to know the difference." Amen.
Amen.
Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Mario A. Johnson, senior Army instructor from Island Coast High School. Lieutenant Colonel Mario Johnson served 24 years in the Army in numerous assignments, and retired as the Professor of Military Science for the University of Central Florida. This is Lieutenant Colonel Mario Johnson's eighth year as a JROTC instructor in the district. Thank you, sir, for your service to our great nation.
Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Desmond Goodman, the Cadet Commander of the Island Coast High School Junior ROTC. Cadet Goodman was recognized by the district for receiving a perfect U.S. History EOC score, and he currently has a weighted GPA of 5.04. He is actively involved in junior ROTC teams and is currently the drill team commander, captain, competing at the district level. Cadet Goodman was offered a three-and-a-half-year ROTC scholarship from the University of South Florida, and is currently competing for a national four-year ROTC scholarship. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's student representative is Juliette Juliana Bindick, the current secretary of the District Student Advisory Committee. Juliana is a sophomore student at Benita Springs High School. She is heavily involved in the community. This year, she founded Benita Springs High School's chapter of the Interact Club, a volunteer service organization. Juliana carries, Juliana cares deeply about the law as a member of her school's mock trial team, in addition to being a teen court attorney. During teen court sessions, Juliana argues on behalf of the state or the defendant in real misdemeanor cases among her peers her age. She is also a member of the National English Honor Society and enjoys writing in her free time. Juliana also plays the clarinet and participates in the school's marching band. As a part of the marching band, Juliana was recently marked, has recently marched in the Edison Festival of Light Parade. She cares deeply for her education, having enrolled in many college-level courses between her freshman and sophomore years, all while maintaining a 4.0 unweighted GPA. Lastly, Juliana has recently placed as a finalist in the Thomas Alva Edison Kiwanis Regional Science and Engineering Fair for her research into altruism, and was chosen to participate in the Rotary Youth Leadership Award Conference later this week. Please welcome Juliana Bindick. Juliana, Juliana, please introduce this evening's acknowledgements and recognitions.
Thank you. Good evening. Next on the agenda are the acknowledgements for the month of March. Our character word for the month is courage. As Mark Twain would say, "Courage is resistance to fear, mastery of fear, not absence of fear." The design you see currently displayed on the screen was created by Abraham Reddiss, a 10th-grade student from Mariner High School. The school board of Lee County acknowledges the following events for the month of March 2023. Read Across America Day on March 2nd, 2023, National Day of Unplugging, March 3rd, 2023, National Foreign Language Week, March 7th through 13th, 2023, National Sleep Awareness Week, March 12th through the 18th, 2020, 2023, Art in Our School Month, Irish-American Heritage Month, and the National Women's History Month. This evening's board members would like to recognize the following. 2023 FHSAA Girls Weightlifting State Champions presented by Ms. Jordan, and the Mariner High School JROTC Marksmanship Team presented by Mr. Fisher. Board members, please join me in the pit for recognitions. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to invite David LaRosa, Director of Athletics and Activities, to join me at the lecture. Thank you for joining me.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
The school district of Lee County is proud to recognize the 2023 Florida High School Athletic Association Girls Weightlifting State Champions. The competition was held at RP Funding Center in Lakeland, Florida on February 18th, 2023. When your name is called, please come to receiver's certificate and join the board members and the superintendent in the pit. The following students are the state champions in their respective weights class, with their total scores being a combination of their snatch and clean and jerk Olympics, which I was trying to figure out what the heck that was, and bench press and clean and jerk traditional. Senior Julia Knoller from Fort Myers High School, Olympic State Champion, 350 pounds total.
Show them off. I know you couldn't get through security.
I thought I had an arm wrestle each of you. I don't have to, thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The next is Junior Julianne Jacobs from Fort Myers High School, traditional state champion, 315 pounds total. Senior Cassidy Emmerich from Mariner High School, Olympic State Champion, 285 pounds total. And Senior Elena Cook from Riverdale High School, traditional state champion, 400 pounds total. Wow. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize these athletes, along with their coaches, for their commitment, determination, and hard work that led to this outstanding accomplishment.
I'd like to invite Lieutenant Colonel Donald Barnett, Director of Army Instruction, to join me at the lectern. Sorry, how you doing, sir? Marksmanship competitions are an NCAA sport and Olympic event. In fact, 32 Division I, II, and III universities offer full athletic scholarships for their marksmanship programs. What's most important, often overlooked, is marksmanship athletes learn critical soft skills that will help carry them through life after high school, such as concentration, self-control, discipline, focus, and teamwork. Over the past nine months, Mariners' marksmanship team has achieved remarkable results. Back-to-back district championship, 2023 Florida State JROTC champion out of 206 teams, and 2023 American Legion Florida State champion out of 85 teams. In national-level competitions, Mariner has placed ninth in the civilian marksmanship program, national championship, ninth in Junior Olympics, eighth in the U.S. Army Youth Air Rifle Championship, ninth in the Army JROTC National Championship, and number-one seed in the southwest U.S. for the Junior Olympics. Great job. When your name is called, please come up to receive your certificate and join the board members and superintendent in the pit. First up, Mariners' marksmanship cadets' individual highlights include Cadet Nathan Croxstrom, 11th grade, won his third consecutive individual district title, won his second consecutive Florida State individual championship, and placed overall at the Army JROTC National Championship. Cadet Leland Aldrich placed second in District 6 overall in Florida. Cadet Erica Vasquez placed fourth in district and fourth overall in Florida and qualified for the three national championship matches in the Junior Olympics. Cadet Alyssa Vasquez placed third in district and 11th in Florida and qualified for two national championship matches. Cadet Trent Olson placed sixth in district and qualified for three national championship matches in the Junior Olympics. Cadet Tyler Darnard qualified for three national championship matches in the Junior Olympics. Okay, but the most important results of Mariners' team are a few quality indicators that translate into classroom performance and success. The team's weighted GPA is 3.8. Students' athlete attendance is 97%, zero disciplinary referrals in the past two years. Great job. The team is led by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Elena Cardenas Cruz and the executive officers, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Kayla Berry, the only seniors on the team. Both have met the qualifications for a civilian marksmanship program, $1,000 scholarship. The school board and superintendent are also very pleased to recognize Mariner High School Marksmanship Team under the direction of JROTC Senior Army Instructor Major Brian Williams at Mariner High School, and his wife, Coach Mary Beth Williams, one of the only female coaches in the U.S. for their success, and wish them the best at the upcoming national championship matches in Ohio in March and again in June. Oh, okay.
This is Alex Walter who qualified for a national championship.
Okay, we have another cadet, Alex Walter, that qualified for another state championship. Congratulations, Cadet.
Congratulations to all the recipients of tonight's recognitions. Next on our agenda is the Hurricane Ian recovery update. Dr. Vaneer, would you please provide the update?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would be happy to. As again, to remind the community, the purpose of this update is to continue to provide information regarding the district's recovery and the efforts we're putting in to recover from Hurricane Ian. The agenda is getting a little bit smaller. We still have Fort Myers Beach Elementary as one of our remaining named schools. Long-term project update, as well as the permanent tracking repair system, which has been updated and on our website. Fort Myers Beach Elementary School option, after the work session the other day, option B is under development. That utilizes the historical building for the current student population with a potential build as we move forward as enrollment increases. Therefore, we are working right now to develop an interlocal agreement, both with the town and with the district. The ad hoc committee meetings are ongoing, and they are supporting that ILA development. And a board briefing will be coming forward on March 28th regarding our progress and potentially a recommendation for a future board meeting. Long-term project update today, Hector A. Cafaretti Jr. Elementary Schools. Recommendations were provided to the board. March 7th, we have recommended that we build on an existing piece of property that we own in the Cape Coral area, and that we restructure Hector A. Cafaretti as a K8 school. We plan to bring that school building to a school board vote as soon as possible. I want you to know that 71% of the maintenance service requests related to damage sustained during Hurricane Ian have been completed. And finally, we want to talk a little bit on our permanent repair tracking system. For those of you comfortable with our website, just below the banner page to the far right-hand side, you'll see the removal of a former thermometer from a former crisis, and it's been replaced by a hurricane symbol listing Hurricane Ian. That particular symbol, if you click on it, leads you to vital information regarding how we reopen schools, safety projects, information about our indoor air quality tests, our safety checklist for reopening our schools, and now provides you information regarding what is transpiring regarding permanent repairs. is transpiring regarding permanent repairs in our school buildings. It also is not included here in the far right-hand column, will list the contractors who are local who have been awarded that work so that they can move forward and we can spend our dollars locally. Those are all my, that's all my information today, Mr. Chairman. Stand ready for any questions or discussion.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment.
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I would like to make a motion, if I may. Given the interest and the significance of the Guardian program, I move that we allow additional public comment for the maximum time allotted per Board Policy 1.11 after the resolution on school safety is read, but before the board discussion and votes on this matter.
The motion has been made by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Givinelli. Is there any discussion on the motion to allow public comment after the resolution is read? This will be a roll call vote, so we'll have to please signify by saying aye or nay when your name is called. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Givinelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Jordan?
Aye.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And aye am an aye. The motion carries six to one. Attorney DePay Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Given the board's vote with the addition of public comment prior to the resolution, these rules will apply at that time as well. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks such as name-calling is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour per speaker. This will be the exact timeage for the comments about the resolution. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call you, five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are 20 speakers that would like to address the board this evening, three minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who has not filled out his card and wishes to speak? Seeing none, Attorney Bruno?
Now, I will remind you, if you're going to speak on the resolution, then you should hold your public comment until that time period. This public comment will be for anything that is not related to the resolution.
Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Noel Hercheck, Eric Ciofoletti, Dawn Ciofoletti, Ron Weekly. And if your name was not called, it's because you signed up to speak about the Guardian program.
My name is Dawn Ciofoletti, and I'd like to begin by stating that I am proud to be a teacher in Lee County, specifically at Lee High Senior High School. I truly believe that being in education is my calling. However, I believe that my calling is also to be a mom. My husband and I have struggled with infertility for almost a decade. I could go into great detail, but for the sake of time, suffice it to say, I live every day with the fact that our official diagnosis is unexplained infertility female, and that it is my body that is not capable of sustaining a healthy pregnancy. Last summer, my husband and I ultimately decided to adopt, that that was our path to parenthood, and we began the process. We worked with an agency, we completed our home study, and just last week, we were notified that we were selected by a birth mother to adopt a baby boy who was due in mid-April. As soon as we found out we were selected, I did what I felt was proper, and I sat down with my administration and our school staffing specialists to make sure that we were doing everything that we could to prepare for my leave when our son was born. The following day, we found out that the teacher contract forbids the use of accumulated sick days for adoption. I spoke to our district HR personnel specifically, and I requested that I could use the days as extended medical leave since our son will be an infant. We were told that since there is not an illness, and as a result, any time that I am out, once my personal days run out, will be unpaid. Due to having to be out and meet with adjusters regarding hurricane damage to our home, I have three personal days, and my husband has four personal days to use when our son is born, and after that, I'm being told that my time will be unpaid. I feel that the district policy is biased against mothers who cannot sustain a healthy pregnancy. While I might not be able to give birth to him, our baby will be my son, and he deserves to have the constant care of his mother during the first six weeks of his life. I'm not asking for anything special, but I am asking that the policy be looked at and revised so that adoptive parents can use their sick time that they've been saving for their entire teaching career to be able to stay home with their child for the first six weeks of their life. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eric Ciofoletti, proud teacher at Lee High Senior High School. I'm Dawn's husband, the previous speaker. From the verbiage of the contract, the teacher contract that we saw, my wife and I believe the clause is in place in the event that staff foster to adopt, take over the care of a child from a loved one, adopt a child older than several months, and so on. In those events, we would agree that the ruling that maternity leave would be inappropriate. We would agree with that. However, since we are adopting an infant through an adoption agency who will be coming home with us directly from the hospital, we hope our case might be heard. When researching the teacher contract, we also went to the school board website and found information for a board workshop that is scheduled for tomorrow, March 8. The agenda for this workshop states that, among other things, FMLA, personal leave, and benefits will be discussed. In reviewing the available documents, it appears that the use of sick time for adoption purposes is specifically stated. We sincerely hope that this protection is put in place for adoptive parents and that changes can be made by the time our son is born. Just to state, we've always been supporters of Lee County School District. We take pride in the fact that our district leadership has always determined to do what is best for our kids during COVID and any other time. If it's best for our kids, it's worth doing, as a doctrine my wife and I follow to the letter in our lessons and work life. Under the same principle, we believe that our infant son requires constant love and care from his mother in the first six weeks of his life. We're not asking for any special treatment and only wish to be afforded the same usage of Dawn's personal days that a birth mother would be granted under similar conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Madeline Stewart. Andrew White. I'm sorry, Mr. White, you wait until we go to the resolution. Tara Jenner. Nancy Terrari, as it relates to books. Sharon McGill, as it relates to books.
Good evening, I'm Madeline Stewart. Those standing behind me in purple represent just a small, the tip of the iceberg of what has been, until tonight, a silent bipartisan unseen majority in Lee County. We are the majority who understands the importance of the American public school as the bedrock of our democracy, the majority who supports educational professionals, not those with a narrow agenda to make the important decisions for our students' education. We are the majority who support an individual parent's right and responsibility to make decisions about books for their own child, but not to make decisions for other people's children. I want to focus tonight on the book challenge procedure and process that implements Policy 2.18. The book challenge approved in February of 2022 is rigorous and objective, and it appears to be working. An ad hoc book challenge committee made up of professionals meets for an in-depth discussion of specific books parents have requested be reviewed. The committee applies legal criteria, and a decision about the educational value of the book is reached by those who understand the curriculum, the developmental level of the students, and the context in which the book will be taught. Individual parents have the right to withhold a book that they do not approve of for their own student. Sounds okay, right? Now, we move to the draft of the new library media process found in your board docs. We have serious concerns about this draft, which provides an additional step so that the ultimate selection of books for an entire school or an entire grade level is left up to that school's PTA or SAC. Any additional step like this would violate the board's book policy and perhaps even the intent of HB 1467 passed last year. We believe book challenge decisions that affect the teaching and learning for an entire classroom, school, or for an entire district should only be made by educational professionals. When another group becomes the final decision-maker, it opens the door to political interference, and it takes away the rights of all parents.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
May I ask the audience to please be seated? Thank you.
Yes, my name is Roy Weekly, and I wanted to talk to you about school safety, and I'm very concerned about the number of children and teachers that have been killed in these schools. I've met with Carmine Maricino several times, and we've come up with a, an idea was so unique, we were awarded a U.S. patent for it. It's a bulletproof shield that would give the students, the teachers, and staff immediate protection if an active shooter entered the room, and it would have an audio and video chip on it so that the police that responded, or the other people from the school, resource officer, or the Guardian people responded, they would know where the shooter was at. I talked with the Cuyahoga County Sheriff, and he said to me, the biggest problem they have when they arrive at a school where there's an active shooting going on, they don't know if the shooter is there, still in the school, if there's one shooter, two shooters, or if he's taken hostages. And so what this shield would do would give immediate bulletproof protection to the staff, and it would give the police the audio and video information they need so that they could respond properly when it arrives. I must guarantee you, if, like that Aaron Feis who was killed in Parkland, if he would have had a bulletproof shield, he would have stopped that shooting right there in the spot, and nobody would have been killed. He threw his life in front of the shooter and was shot, and then the person he was trying to protect was then shot afterwards. So this is a shield. I've talked to Carmine about it several times, and there was not funding available for it. I've met with Florida State Representative. If Lee County requests these bulletproof shields, the state of Florida will pay for them. That's all. Could I, I'd like to, can I leave this information for you?
Yes, you can take it over to the desk.
Can you give it to our board secretary, please, over here? Thank you.
Good evening, Tara Jenner. I wanted to speak about two things. Oops. Yes, not. I wanted to speak about two things tonight, and since I have to leave early, one of them is on the Guardian program, so I'm speaking out of turn, but I won't double dip. So the first thing is I'd like to mention, as many of you know, I was active-duty military for a couple of days shy of 10 years, and I took an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. It is my position that, and I think it's the position of our founding fathers and our Constitution, that our rights come from God and not from government or man. As such, our right to bear arms is something that is protected from the government's interference by our Constitution, and I am therefore in favor of the Guardian program, especially in light of the fact it does not force individuals who are uncomfortable or unwilling to bear arms to do so, but it opens up an opportunity to those who feel confident and confident to do so, as well as those who have received the requisite training in order to give those in their midst confidence that they are going to be qualified and capable of addressing the needs that they're charged with in that capacity. The second thing I'd like to mention is the fact that history is something that we look at regularly in our schools, and we want our students to be aware of our past history, but there's also ongoing and current history that is available and at our fingertips here in Lee County. And so coming up on April 21, there is a Lincoln Reagan dinner, and the 45th President of the United States is the keynote speaker. It is not a political rally, it is a keynote speech that is being presented by him and a couple of other of our elected officials, including Byron Donalds and Greg Stube. And I would just encourage not just the board, but everybody in the audience and listening online, to go to leegop.org and learn about what this event entails and how you can purchase tickets and details about that. So I just wanted to share that because anytime we have an opportunity to hear from either a current or a previous president, it is history in the making and something that I think is of import to our students and to our community. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Terrari. I'm here this evening to stand with those who are talking about supporting our teachers, our curriculum specialists, and our librarians as the most qualified members of the school community to decide on the books and the content of what's in our schools and our libraries, in line with your current policies. These decisions should not be made by a small group of individuals without the requisite skills. I think as we, I heard from Maddie Stewart, it's right for a parent to question what their child is reading, and it's up to them to decide, but it's not up to them to decide what all children read. Parents' rights should not mean that any parent can push their opinion on all children in our schools. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Mary Ann Wilbur. Joe Phillips. Bobby DeLisandro. Denise Nystrom. And just reminder to keep your comments relative to the agenda, as well as to anything that's regarding the operation of the school district, and if you're going to talk about school safety relating to the Guardian program, or guns in schools, or anything like that, please wait till the resolution is read, and then you will have additional public comment time that is solely focused on that issue, please. Thank you.
My name is Sharon McGill. Good evening, everyone. As you know, I've been before you many times, but tonight it seems like I- As you know, I've been before you many times, but tonight it seems like I have my tribe with me. I've been up here so many times talking about policy 2.18, and how it needs to be reviewed. And I just want you to know that it wasn't just my single voice, there are many, many voices who may not have been in this auditorium, but who feel the same way. I'm speaking out of respect for our teachers and librarians who are trained professionals, and who decided to spend their lives dedicated to our students. And the fact that they're being disrespected by their opinions not being taken into consideration is really sad, and it, I'm not quite sure how to say it, it just shows such a lack of disrespect. And I hope that as we're developing, as you're developing, policy 2.18, and as I've discussed before, needs to be separated into two different policies for instructional materials, and one for media and classroom materials, because they're two totally separate things and are evaluated differently. But you need to respect the teachers and the librarians, and use them, why not get their opinions on the policy? Who better than to help structure than the teachers and librarians? And I just hope that going forward, you will take that into consideration.
I am here to discuss the Guardian program, and I want to make sure that I show respect for the rules, so is it acceptable for me to talk about it now?
We would prefer if you wait till the resolution is read, and that way everyone who wants to talk about that will have that.
I apologize, I don't know how I ended up early.
Corruption can only exist having an equally corrupt legal system to protect it. This has become evident in my correspondence with the board's attorney. I would like to note, before we began our interchange, I proposed what I believed and still believe is evidence that a Sunshine violation occurred to attorney friend of mine. He drew the same conclusion, that it would appear Sunshine had been violated. Board attorney stated that each board member was questioned and had no knowledge while Mr. Allen stated that he had a quorum. So who's lying? The board's attorney proceeded to claim that few members were familiar with Mr. Allen, and have spoken with him on general topics, including Fort Myers Beach. However, there was no indication that two or more board members met with him and discussed the claim of an undermarket exchange of the beach property, or anything else that might come before the board. The claim that a few members were familiar with Mr. Allen implies that he is not known to all of them. Seven sentences into your response, the email shows a willingness to be untruthful. How does one possibly believe that a person who has been a campaign contributor in attendance at many political and social events, even proposed a socialist-style housing project to the district as early as 2017, to imply that only a few members were familiar with Mr. Allen is a provable lie? You continue to provide me with the definition of the Sunshine Law and quoted a case referring to a reporter and a council member. Remember, Mr. Allen is not a reporter, but a developer with aspirations of creating income through the district. Superintendent Bernier was clear that the beach property would not be brought to consideration on March 7th, you stated. Considering that I ripped the cherry off the top of that cupcake, at least at the last action meeting, I'd guess not. Attorney Bruno also said that the members denied talking with Mr. Allen about the sale or lease of the beach property. The records should show that the entire board has called Mr. Allen a liar, a pathological liar. That's going to make for great conversation at the next gala. I continue to request an outside investigation, conduct a forensic audit. Let's start with procurement and maintenance, so you know you have trouble there. If the board is truly shifted to a speak up, listen up culture, it should consider not replying with BS. Ms. Fleming, if you think this is a personal attack, I can assure you it's not. I believe you're just the perfume surrounding the color bees. The board has proven to be nothing more than kitchen midden. Thank you, have a great day.
I'm Dr. Bernier. My name is Bobby DeLisandro, and I appreciate the time given for me to speak tonight to policy 2.1 review. It seems to me that the current policy is working. However, the policy is under revision. Here are some things for you to consider. Perhaps there should be two policies, one for instructional materials and one for library classroom materials, as they're both very detailed. Process should not be included in the policy unless mandated by law. Since this policy does not mandate it by law, I suggest the process guidelines should be visibly footnoted in the revised policy. The difference between policy and procedure, process is clear. Policy direction is set by the board according to law. The process of procedure is developed so that those goals can be reached, and should be developed by your professional staff. They are the ones who have the curriculum and instruction knowledge. This is a best practice that's been used by stellar districts and supported by the professional organizations forever. I understand that our professional educators are working on revisions with parents and community members, and I agree with this. However, the policy and process should not be dictated by private interest groups. This is too important to be dictated by private interest groups. It seems that the current policy is working well, and allows parents to make good decisions for their children. From my read, parents' rights are not being violated as the Miller process is used when a challenge is brought forth. In looking at the new draft, it appears to be a bit confusing and somewhat conflated. I respectfully ask you to consider these points during revision review. Thank you for your time tonight, and I thank your staff as we work there doing on the revision. Have a good evening.
Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Daniels, Gwen Gittens, and Sergio Cruz.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Bernier, and Attorney Bruno. On two occasions, I emailed all of you to make you aware of the Social Studies textbook review that I conducted as the project leader on behalf of Florida Citizens Alliance. Because within the next few weeks, the school districts will receive a list of books that are available for adoption. School district personnel will begin the process of textbook adoption and purchase. The textbook review was conducted was extremely comprehensive. Sixty-nine reviewers from throughout the state of Florida reviewed 39 books. Of the 39 books, 37 of them did not meet the Individual Freedom Act of 2022 and corresponding education rule 6A 1.094124 and state statute 1003.42. The textbooks were littered with factual inaccuracies, slants, and biases. In other words, the books were filled with critical race theory and social emotional learning. If the textbooks that contain CRT are purchased, they will remain in the hands of our children for a minimum of four years. You have in your possession the executive summary detailing the Social Studies textbook review and corresponding laws that were sent via email, but I will enter them tonight for the record. As a school board, it is your prerogative to purchase textbooks that are not on the textbook adoption list. You have it within your authority to purchase textbooks from any entity you see fit. While you might be told that it would be more costly to purchase other materials, that is not correct. But whatever the cost, the textbooks must be in compliance with state statute. You may be aware that the Individual Freedom Act was co-offered by our former Senator Ray Rodriguez of Lee County, now chancellor of the state university system, and signed into law by our esteemed Governor Ron DeSantis, who had the confidence to endorse Mr. Sam Fisher and Mr. Armour persons. Appendix A of the executive summary provides an extensive list of factually correct curriculum materials that utilize primary source documents and are free from critical race theory. I ask that this board remain steadfast regarding adhering to the state statute and seek to purchase the instructional materials found in appendix A. Thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, I am Robert Daniels. I've been teaching with the district for 10 years, specifically at Lee Virtual School. I was watching the workshop this afternoon. I just want to extend an invitation I've given previous boards, that if you would like to know more about the operation of Lee Virtual School, I am more than willing to host you in my house while I work, or to go to your place of wherever you would like me to be, and work there with you for the day, so you can see what it is the virtual teachers do, and better understand our system. That being said, I've come the previous week's meetings to talk about teacher pay, and I've established that, you know, the teacher pay has not gone up and adjusted for inflation since I started, and a number of other concerns, including the fact that when we open the Teal Middle School, there might not be teachers to staff it, because who are you going to get to come to the county to teach for the current pay rate? When I first moved into Fort Myers proper eight years ago, my one-bedroom apartment went for $865 a month. I could afford that on teacher's pay. That same apartment today goes for $1,700 for less than 700 square feet. The cheapest apartment I could find, when I looked earlier today, was a $1,300, 400-square-foot studio apartment downtown. That's not a tenable place for any teacher to move in. There's not going to be people who are willing to come here for what we give our teachers to start, to fill those empty positions. And when I last checked on the website, we had over 200 empty positions still. Something's got to give with the teacher compensation, and unfortunately, I'll be the second teacher here tonight, well, third, to discuss about discriminatory compensation packages. The board has done wonderful things with trying to get the teachers bonuses, things they've never done before, you're breaking new ground, and I appreciate that. However, the $4,000 of compensation in medical benefits that are being given only to teachers with dependents, the rest of us that are teaching for you that do not have those dependents, we also have medical bills and expenses. There's no reason why I should be receiving $0 at all into my, and I'm on the HSA healthcare plan, but as a bachelor with no children, I receive nothing out of that. Meanwhile, people who have simply made other lifestyle choices than I have, who have not had their children eliminated by other individuals or still in the womb, should be compensated at a higher rate. So again, I would invite you to contact me about the Virtual School. I promise I will not jump topic and rant to you about the pay rate while we have those discussions. Thank you.
Good evening, Gwynetta Gittens. And you all don't have to stand the whole time, I just enjoy seeing somebody standing out there, supporting what I'm saying. So you can actually sit if you like. First of all, I respect the voices, of the purple voices that have spoken this evening. I wrote an article several months ago about a choir, and I said, when you have a choir and all you hear are the altos, it's a pretty dull chorus. When you don't hear the sopranos and the tenors and the basses and all of the musical instruments, you don't really hear the beauty of the choir. And I relate that to listening to what people are saying, and hearing all of the parts of the choir, not just the altos. On a couple of other things, really quickly, regarding the ad hoc committee, I hope that you all have had an opportunity to read the email that I sent with the details explaining how I felt about that. But basically, we, in three weeks, I think it was, still don't know who the ad hoc committee is, and if we wanted to speak to them who are representing us, there was no opportunity to do that. And after the second survey, there's no need for a committee. The people have spoken about the six final names that were up there. So I really don't see a necessity for a committee to go over what the majority of the people have stated. Transparency. And the last thing that I want to talk about is, campaign promises are made that you will listen to us, that you will hear us, that you will be our voice, you will be the voice of the voiceless. A few months down the road, there's silence. People come, people go, people pour out their hearts, and their requests, and their thoughts, and they're met with silence, followed by the dreaded, the next item on the agenda is, followed by additional silence. People who come to share their thoughts and the thoughts of others. The next item on the agenda is, represents saying, "Thank you for letting me out of the campaign promise that I will listen, I will hear, and I will let you speak, and I will speak for what it is that you need." We have to understand that it's not a chore to listen, it's not a chore to include all of the choir. You need the sopranos, the altos, the tenors, the bass, and the musicians.
Good evening, school board members, faculty and staff, and general public. Before I begin, I'd like to ask the board members to just pause and consider what they might consider to be an appropriate and effective collaboration between parents, districts, and their child's school. Also, I'd like to charge the district to consider the spirit of transparency amongst parents, districts, and schools. I'd like you to think of the current level of that transparency, and think of the current level of transparency, and if all the necessary information is available for parents and district staff to be an effective and meaningful participant in their child's education. My name is Sergio Cruz, my son Elijah and I live in Lehigh Acres, Florida, and he attends Oakhamic Middle School. He's in seventh grade in a self-contained ESE classroom. And over the years of being a father and advocate on behalf of my son Elijah, I have encountered many challenges, obstacles, smoke and mirrors, and false red tape in regards to acquiring support, services, or accommodations, or even obtaining a pre-written notice when those services or accommodations are denied. Oftentimes, I'm given the runaround and pass the baton approach when responding to a request for services, or to even locate a district policy. I am left in the dark as a parent in regards to how to effectively advocate for my child when the proper information and documents aren't readily available, which is why I beg for a more thorough policy emphasizing and expressing the importance of transparency amongst the classroom, school, and home. Out of an abundance of caution, I have reserved my concern to one subject matter in particular tonight that I believe is hindering and preventing the ability for myself and his mother to effectively participate and help direct my son's education and his IEP as afforded within the guidelines and spirit of several federal, state, and district policies or statutes. And therefore, I believe that my son is effectively being denied access to a free and appropriate public education. I am seeking response from the board in regards to clarification in any relative district policy, state statute, federal law, et cetera pertaining to a parental request for classroom observation. I believe that the current legislation, the current literature, and the current best practices are pretty straightforward in regards to classroom observations and the afforded right of a parent to observe their student in the classroom, to be a meaningful participant in my son's IEP, and help direct my child's education. When a school administrator takes an adverse position to a parental request, it creates an appearance of three things, and all are bad. One, the curriculum, program, and setting is clearly not appropriate, and I will quickly discover this. Two, the school is attempting to keep important information from parents. Or three, which may be the most disappointing, is a combination of incompetence, ineptitude, and ignorance. I ask for some assistance to resolve this issue. I can point you to some direct statutes, like the Every Student Succeeds Act, Section 116, and even the Oakhamic Middle School Parent-School Compact that was signed by the principal and under the principal responsibilities clearly states creating opportunities for a classroom observation. I yield my time, thank you.
And there is one more person who wanted to speak, Chelsea, about books.
Hi, my name is Chelsea, I'm brand new to Lee. This is the first district meeting I've been to or have actually I've been to or have actually been here for. I moved from one of those states to find solace in Florida and their education. I fled California for a better education for my children. So I came tonight, I am late, but I came tonight to see what was going on. I've actually had the opportunity to speak to my board member, which was awesome. He was amazing. But there are certain things that, I mean, all of a sudden, immediately, I did a book request, just to see, a public information request, just to see if certain books are available. I had to pay for it. I just paid for it tonight. Don't think that I should have to pay for 21 minutes of time for looking up to see if certain books are in this district, books that we had in California that basically teach children the difference between spitting and swallowing in middle school when my children are inching up to that age where they're going to learn about this. We just don't need to make these books available. But having listened to the actual last gentleman that came, I am all about the children, listening to that there's a problem with transparency and IEPs, et cetera, and he's having a hard time getting information, I will approach him and tell him about public information requests under the FOIA. I will explain to him the information that is available federally and help him uncover ways to solve problems within the district. I am very concerned about fixing things, making it better for our children. I don't have a speech prepared. Usually I do. I wish I did. But I'm very concerned about making parents aware of how they can go about getting information. But you know, me getting charged $15.75 to look up seven books, I think is ridiculous. You guys should not charge parents to do that. And if I talk to him and he has to spend a whole bunch of money looking up these public requests, I think it's ridiculous. I think that in the spirit of transparency, that you guys should be transparent. But I am also solution-based. And I'm going to tell you right now with my last 26 seconds, at the school that my children go to, Gulf Elementary, I personally take my kids to and from school every day, but every single solitary day, there's one bus that never has a bus driver, and kids get home an hour and a half to two hours late. That's a problem. I understand you guys might have a shortage, but there's a solution that we can do within the PTO, with the parents, with the bus drivers, and there's a solution that could be had.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment. Mr. Chairman, there was, there does seem to be a little confusion with regards to House Bill 1467. If I may have a moment just to explain that a little bit to those who spoke about that this evening?
Please do.
Thank you. With regards to the SAC or other constituents or community members involved in securing books and the purchase of books, I want you to know that House Bill 1467 actually requires that community members, and it could be through SAC, it could be through PTA or other avenues, are supposed to be involved in that process. However, the ultimate decision in terms of how those books are purchased and which books are purchased lies with the media specialists. So I heard some confusion about that, and I wanted to clear that up. And with regards, I don't see Mr. Phillips here, but as I stated in my correspondence to Mr. Phillips, if he disagrees, he is welcome to contact the State Attorney's Office, the Florida Commission on Ethics, or the Office of the Governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I do want to say that, and I will go out on a limb and speak for the whole board, we do listen to y'all when you talk. We don't usually respond at that moment because that's not our policy. Doing the good of the order, we often do. And I'm sure we'll be doing that tonight, but we hear everyone who speaks every evening at the board meeting, and we will take action as we are able to. We'll now move on to the consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or tabled items? Mr. Fisher?
I have no items.
Mrs. J. Vanelli?
I have two, F2 and L7.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none. Thank you.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, the agenda's consent action items with the exception of the pulled items F2 and L7? Ms. Jordan?
I move that we accept the agenda items with the exception of F2 and L7, as in...
Is there a second? Mr. Fisher?
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Mr. Fisher. Please record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Bernier, would you like to introduce any administrators at this time, or should we?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to recognize Bridget Adcock, whose location of work is in Human Resources. She'll be accepting this evening with your action, the Coordinator Position for Human Resources in the Information Systems Department.
Congratulations. We'll next move on to unfinished business and tabled items. We have two items pulled to address. Dr. Bernier, would you please read your recommendation for item F2?
Item F2, which is under the board office, is the approval of the reimbursement for legal fees incurred by board member Chris Patrica to defend herself against several complaints filed with the Florida Commission on Ethics.
Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation for F2?
I move we adopt the superintendent's recommendation for L2. Oh, sorry.
F2.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jordan? The item has been moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Ms. Jordan. Is there any discussion? Mrs. J. Vanelli?
Yes, thank you. I'm the one that actually pulled this. I actually would like to have Mr. Dupree Bruno, please read the law on this, please, for the public.
With regards to a public official's ability to get reimbursement, it is well-established in Florida law, both in common law, meaning laws created by written opinions of judges, as well as Florida Statute 1012.26, that public officials have the right to legal representation at the expense of the public when defending themselves if the incident occurred while one, they were performing their official duties, and two, served a public purpose, public interest. These factors, what we call a legal test, are established in Ellison versus Reed, 397, Southern 2nd, 352, Florida 1st, DCA 1981; Thornburg versus City of Fort Walton Beach, 568, Southern 2nd, 914, Florida 1990; Malloy versus Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, 946, Southern 2nd, 1260, 1st, DCA 2007, as well as in the Attorney General Opinion 91-58 issued in 1991. The board's decision has to be based on the factual evidence that the board requires to make its decision. If the board determines that both prongs of the legal test have been met, the official's legal fees must be paid pursuant to Attorney General's Opinion 91-58, Page 3, as well as the cases that previously were recited.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we have to have this discussion, but I feel it was necessary to do so for the public's sake, as well as I want to acknowledge that I believe that these invoices do meet the two-prong law to be, and to be legit. In review of the complaints, there was one in particular that I was concerned with regarding an ongoing investigation that the information was actually in this complaint. And at this time, I was actually going to divide them, but at this time, I've changed my mind. And what I want to do is move to accept all three invoices at this time, but with the exception of an ongoing, because of the ongoing investigation of any malfeasance, if Ms. Patrica's has any part in that, that she will reimburse, reimburse the district. So I'm going to reread that because I kind of didn't say it very clear, I think. So I want to move to accept and pay all invoices at this time, but with the exception of the ongoing investigation of any malfeasance that's founded, and that Ms. Patrica will play a part in that, that she will reimburse the district if that is founded.
So let me, let me see if I can assist Ms. J. Vanelli. So currently, there's a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation that all four invoices, all the invoices related to the four cases be paid, and was seconded, I believe, by Ms. Jordan. Are you asking that that be amended to say that if there is any indication that there was any wrongdoing relating to one of those particular cases, that Ms. Patrica will reimburse the board for that, for the payment that is being made?
Yes.
So...
Is there a second to that amendment?
So I will second the amendment.
Okay, discussion on the amendment?
And so, for me, for discussion on it, it is really clear that the governor holds school board members accountable. And I think it would be prudent for us to acknowledge this at this time and make, you know, have the public aware that we are watching and we are doing, trying to do better as public officials or elected officials, that we will make sure that we're not spending money that we should not be doing. So I'm trying to be physically responsible, and we, there, in the past, there has been many investigations that should not have happened. And I want to make sure that we're on the right path, that we've turned this page as a board, to make sure that our community is aware that we are going to be transparent and be accountable ourselves. And so that's why I'm bringing it up like this today.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chair, and, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. So in looking at that, I would argue, just based on what I've seen, that it is overly speculative at the moment for that. As a Florida licensed and practicing attorney, how I've read the investigations, I do not believe that, from my readings of it, that I would see that come out, arise out of that at the moment. I would argue that we're really trying to jump ahead at that point. If there is any issue in the future, yes, I believe we need to address at that point, but there's nothing within that. I mean, I am, just like you, I am big on transparency. I agree with that. I'm looking at, you know, this, I'm looking at the prongs were met, I'm looking at, you know, the fees were reasonable. I'm just, you know, based on prior board precedent as well in paying these past fees. I'm looking just within the lines of the ethics complaint, and I believe that's what we need to be looking at when we're analyzing this. If there's something else that arises from that, I would absolutely entertain and agree on the transparency part. If there's something further with that, I would absolutely support moving forward. But on the amendment, I would not support that at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Ms. Patrica? I just want to confirm that it's okay for me to vote because this does not, this is not an economic benefit to me. This is just a reimbursement. Is that correct? Please, through the chair, to Attorney Bruno. I believe that there's, there's a decision out there from the Attorney General that speaks to this specific situation out of a governing body, I want to say, in the Tampa area. This is not an economic benefit. This is just a reimbursement, and thus, there is no conflict of interest.
So I'm thinking of the bylaws that the board kind of gave the thumbs up to move forward, and your, your new policy that's going to be coming forward would limit it to economic benefits. So yes, you can vote.
Thank you.
I would like to add, I read the complaint that Ms. Juvenelli is referencing, and I also read the investigation that's going on, and she is not named specifically in that investigation. So I see no reason to withhold as far as the way I look at it at this time. Yes, Mr. Fisher?
And I'd also reemphasize with this, it's not about an individual person. What I'm looking at this is each board member and whatever their duty is based in the complaint. So that's how I'm looking at it. I'm not looking at it an individual person of anyone on this board. I just want to make that clear.
Any other discussion before we vote on the amendment?
I just wanted to say that I, I second it so we would have a conversation. That's why I seconded it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will do a roll call vote on the amendment at this time to the amendment...
Well, you have the public comment on the first part, which was, because this was already part of the agenda. It's just pulled. It's not a new motion that's being brought forth. I mean, they're, and I understand, Ms. Gittens, what you're saying, but this is a, this was already on the agenda. So, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, the motion that we're voting on right now, the amendment we're voting on right now to the motion, is to pay the fees for three of the four. So all those, is that correct?
I don't believe that's what the amendment was. I believe how it was amended is that we were going to pay all four, with the understanding if that something came up that would require us to revisit, that there would be a reimbursement. I believe that is what the amendment is.
Thank you. All right, we'll now vote on that amendment. Mr. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. J. Vanelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Nay.
And Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I am a no. The amendment fails 6 to 1. Now, we will vote on the main motion here, approval of reimbursement of legal fees incurred by board member Chris Patrica to defend herself against several complaints filed with the Florida Commission of Ethics. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. J. Vanelli?
No.
Mrs. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries 6 to 1. Now, Dr. Bernier, would you please read your recommendation for pulled item L7?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, approval to, I'm sorry, item L7, approval to award ITN N227439MG for program management oversight of permanent facility repairs to Answer Advisory Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $2,332 million, as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet. The total amount includes a 10% contingency for services that the district may require. This ITN will be effective for three years, beginning March 7, 2023, through March 6, 2026, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods upon written agreement of the vendor and the district for up to $2,332,0110 for the first year of the base contract period, March 7, 2023, through March 6, 2024. The ITN will be utilized to manage and coordinate the permanent facility repairs sustained from Hurricane Ian. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute... Approval authorizes the Superintendent to execute all related documents.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation for L7? Approval to award ITN number N227439MG, program management oversight of permanent facility repairs. Is there a motion?
Ms. Morgan.
Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve the Superintendent's recommendation to award ITN number N227439MG, program management oversight of permanent facility repairs.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mrs. Giavanelle. The item has been moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Giavanelle. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Giavanelle?
Thank you. Okay, I pulled this item, and I just wanted to talk about it a little bit. We actually had ECOM program management, right, excuse me, the Superintendent had hired them during the emergency order after Hurricane Ian. And I think, I mean, I know we need program management, and I know we need oversight, and we don't have, we're understaffed in construction. And so I think that's really what I want to talk about, is that we could save this $2 million if we had enough employees and staff in construction and had project managers that could manage some of this business that we're going to have over the next, actually, I don't even know. I mean, I think it's going to be longer than three years personally, but because there's a lot of things that we have to do and plus build schools. So I am going to support this this evening, but my concern, number two, was I believe in keeping business local and using our local vendors and our local people. This vendor is coming from Longwood, Florida, which is over in Seminole County, and I'm concerned over the extra expenses that they'll have to be here in Lee County when this is not really where they are normally. I want to, I really like the fact that if we had local vendors doing these jobs, or oversight, a local vendor overseeing these jobs and projects, that it would keep the business local and our economy local. Now, we're going to be feeding Longwood's economy versus Lee County's economy. So I think that's really what was important to me, and I wanted to have that discussion. And the Superintendent and I have had several discussions about this, and he understands, you know, my feeling on it, but, and I'll let him explain it a little bit more, but I know he felt like this was the better, better opportunity to have a better, what's the word I want to say, that it's a little bit cheaper than what the ECOM was. Really, it was more feasible, I should say. So, Dr. Bernier, through the chair?
Yes, please.
Just as a piece of advisement for the public, AECOM is the company that we're speaking about. AECOM was hired to work on the remediation and stabilization immediately following the hurricane. As you saw in my hurricane update today, we are still involved in that process, but that is AECOM's scope of work. When we put this ITN, this invitation to negotiate, out on the street, AECOM did bid. So did ANZER Advisory, as well as two other companies. A local company started to bid, but never submitted their bid. One of the reasons that we believe this may have occurred, but since we're in a cone of silence, I've not contacted any other construction sites, construction companies within the area, because right now, we've not approved a bid, it would be inappropriate me to speak with them, that there was more money to be had in the $230 to $300 million worth of repair than there was in a $2 million oversight of the work to be done. So better to be involved in fixing the roofs, fixing the schools, and putting the permanent repairs together, as well as continuing down the process of getting new schools, so they didn't wind up in, we believe, so they didn't wind up in a conflict of interest regarding overseeing work while at the same time wanting to construct work. Can't do both. That's what I believe occurred, I've expressed that to Ms. Giavanelle, but until such time as we make an approval, we're not really in a position where I can contact the previous vendors. AECOM, we were, the public record is very clear, they came in exorbitantly high in comparison to the way they bid the remediation and stabilization. I suspect that as soon as we take action, the AECOM representatives will be in touch with me, we can have some discussions about why their pricing went where it went. Specifically around local vendors, again, I encourage, as I did in my, the end of my presentation tonight on the hurricane update, on the far right-hand column of all the work for each one of the schools, we've listed the primary generalized contractor for roofing, tile, acoustical tiles, all those things that we need to replace at our schools. Those are all local companies, and that's where the vast majority of our money is going to be spent. So as to the aspect of additional staff, if I could get planners, I would. We have three currently, we've done the interview process for our fourth, that will fully staff out what we've been budgeted to put in our planning office. The reality, though, is this work is not going to last forever. My suspicions are is it won't even go a full three years, and our contracts will allow us to stop services when the work is done. But if these company was to get involved, for instance, with Fort Myers Beach and Hector Cafaretta, as we build those programs out, they could be here for three years. The reality is, this is a staff augmentation. I don't have the staff right now, I have a considerable amount of repairs that need to be done, and I need to make sure that the planning is done appropriately with our team, but also the work following repair, where somebody actually goes out and puts eyes on it to ensure that that repair has been completed and completed correctly, is incredibly important. We could hire people, but in two years, the work will be over. And what do we do with those people then? All right, that's why, that's why I've expressed, that's why consultants exist. So I think that touched on Ms. Giavanelle's points.
Thank you.
And thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation for L7. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Giavanelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Patricca?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda is the resolution for School Board of Lee County, Florida, regarding school safety. We'll be having public comment on this after the resolution is read. Whereas the School Board of Lee County, Florida, the School Board, consisting of seven elected Florida constitutional officers, is the governing body for the School District of Lee County, Florida, the district. Whereas the safety of all children is the highest priority of the School Board, and as such, the School Board is deeply saddened by any tragic event at a school, including but not limited to the tragic events of Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, on February 14, 2018, Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, on May 24, 2022, Richneck Elementary School in Newport, Virginia, on January 6, 2023, and the recent events at Michigan State University on February 13, as well as many others. Whereas the district has experienced social media threats of violence against schools, students and staff, and weapons have been found on school property. Whereas recent swatting threats at some of our schools have raised concerns locally and nationally. Whereas the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act requires each district's school board and superintendent to partner with law enforcement agencies to establish or assign one or more safe school officers at each school facility within the district by implementing a combination of options that best meets the needs of the school district. Whereas the school has school resource officers and desires to have a force multiplier for additional protection, enhanced safety, and to add another layer of security in our schools. Whereas the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act enacted in 2018 by the Florida Legislature, established a Coach Aaron Feist Guardian Program, known as the Guardian Program, to aid in the prevention or abatement of active assailant incidents on school premises. Whereas the School Board may implement, and the Lee County Sheriff, Carmen Marcino, may establish a Guardian Program. Whereas there are very specific legal requirements to establish a Guardian Program. A candidate of the Guardian Program must undergo extensive training that will be provided by the Sheriff's Office, which includes 12 hours of certified nationally recognized university training, and 132 hours of comprehensive firearm safety and proficiency training for a total of 144 hours of extensive training. Candidates must also pass a psychological evaluation and a drug test in accordance with the statutory requirements. In addition, candidates are required to compete ongoing training, weapons inspection, and firearm qualification on, at a minimum and annual basis. Whereas in keeping the School Board's paramount concern for the safety of district students, the School Board desires to memorialize its position on the importance of school safety and to enact a Guardian Program within the district. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board adopts the following resolutions in support of school safety as follows. The School Board supports and will adhere to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Service Act. The School Board intends to utilize the options available to meet the requirements of Section 26 of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act for the protection and safety of students, staff, visitors, and property. Number three, the School Board desires to implement a Guardian Program to serve as a force multiplier for additional security and safety. The School Board directs the Superintendent to work closely with the Lee County Sheriff, Carmen Marcino, and other local law enforcement agencies in advising and implementing a Guardian Program. The safe operation of the program shall be the paramount concern, as well as compliance with the specific statutory requirements noted in the Florida Statute 1006.12, which includes extensive training, psychological evaluation, and drug testing. Number four, the sole purpose of the Guardian is to prevent or abate an active assailant on school premises. As such, the Guardian shall have no authority to act in any law enforcement capacity except to the extent necessary to prevent or abate an active assailant. A candidate for the Guardian Program shall be a volunteer. Candidates must be a full-time, must be full-time employees of the district who are in good standing. Further, candidates shall not be employees exclusively performing classroom duties, such as teachers, as defined in Florida Statute 1012.012A. Any candidate of the Guardian Program that fails any part of the application process, including the background check and any part of the training, psychological or drug test, is automatically barred from the program. The Superintendent is directed to draft policies and procedures to effectuate this resolution. At this time, is there a motion to adopt the resolution on school safety? Mr. Fisher?
Motion to adopt the resolution as spoken and written.
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. Fisher and seconded by Mrs. Langford Fleming. Prior to the Board's discussion, we'll open the floor for public comment under the same guidelines as previously advised by Attorney Bruno. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a comment card? Okay.
I have to go behind the door.
Ms. Bruno, we have a list of...
We do. We have 10 individuals who wish to address the Board with regards to the resolution. The time is three minutes per speaker.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about the timing, I did not realize that I was jumping ahead. My name is Dr. Mary Ann Wilbur. I have two children in this school district. I've never spoken at a school board meeting before because I've never felt the need. I have tremendous faith in the system. I love my schools, my children's teachers, their principal, and our Superintendent, who visited my first grade, my son's opening at the Sanibel School recently. Thank you so much for what you do, and thank you for taking the safety of our children seriously. Okay, I really, really, really appreciate it. However, I am very, very concerned about this resolution. All right, I'm a physician, I have two public health degrees, one in social epidemiology, the other in health administration and public policy. I am facile on the data that comes with this, so when it came across my desk, it jumped out at me. This is very, very concerning. There are very little to no data that such a guardian would actually be prepared to stop an assailant. It's, the chances are infinitesimally small. However, the chances of an unintentional firearm death of a child is exponentially higher than the chances that an armed assailant is actually taken down. Exponentially. There is significant data, I have lots of citations, and I'm happy to share them, I gave my contact information. All right? We even know so much about this that I could predict what would happen. Okay? It would be a male, because males choose to carry these weapons. The male would, it would be completely accidental, he would probably be using the restroom, he would take his holster and hang it or put it somewhere, he knows he's not supposed to, but he just, just wants. And he gets called away, he's probably the janitor, statistically speaking. He is called because a child is vomiting in the cafeteria, he forgets, he runs to the cafeteria, the gun is left in the room, the restroom. A child, just like my first grade boy, who is curious and smart and capable, would walk in the bathroom, easily unsnap the holster, easily undo the safety, pointed at a friend, think he is kidding, and shoot his friend. Statistically, that is what would happen if you passed this resolution. The only thing that changes is that instead of this child's death being on the hands of a mentally ill stranger, the death of that child is now on the hands of the people in this room. Please, whoever put this in front of you, tell them you're sorry. You know that they're dedicated to child safety, but you just can't support taking responsibility of a dead child.
Will the following individuals please line up? Noel Hersick, Amanda Burry, Johnny Streets, Nancy Terrari, Sharon McGill.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I've been a teacher in the Lee County School District for 23 years, I'm also a parent, and I've never come to talk to you guys or done anything like this. But as a parent of and a teacher for the Lee County School District, I'm here to ask that you please vote down arming more people on school campuses. This school year, my son was at Mariner High School during their swatting call. As a parent, this was very real fear for me, and the long 10 minutes that it took until I heard from him was the worst 10 minutes of my life. I was terrified, I was sick. After I finally reached him, that fear spread to the many students that I know at Mariner. I'm an itinerant teacher, and Mariner is one of my schools. I want to publicly thank the two trained officers at Mariner High School, Officer Lucas and Officer Perez, the school staff, and all the first responders that cleared that high school that day. Many of the staff, and my own son in particular, that I spoke to after this experience, said they felt relieved with the speed and manner of the response of the trained officers. I only tell you this story because it's an example of how a crisis plan worked. All the hard work that the people have put in, it worked that day. My son feels safer because of that experience. None of the officers hesitated, they followed their practice and rehearsed plan. I do think it's critical that we maintain having trained school resource officers who not only have prior training, but are required to complete ongoing rigorous training to ensure that they are equipped to protect our students and staff. Allowing more guns on campus does not make me, as a teacher or a parent, feel like a campus is more safe, the opposite is true. I find it alarming to allow any person who passes a drug screening and a psychological test, who completes 144-hour training, to carry a gun on a school campus. Please, consider at the minimum to table this and take a poll to determine how your teachers, your students, your staff, and the school resource officers feel about this. If you're not willing to vote no, at least poll us. Every person I spoke to about this today didn't feel like this was a good idea. My son, his friends, other teachers, and... My son, his friends, other teachers, administrators, in my opinion, it is a really bad idea, and I think that other people have talked about the shortage of teachers. It is going to increase. This makes us feel very, very unsafe. Thank you.
Ma'am, could you just state your name, please?
I apologize. It's Noel Hersick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Johnny Streets, and to the Honorable Chair and the Honorable Members, the Honorable Superintendent, and the Honorable Attorney. I am not an activist or an advocate, but I do have some concerns that I hope your decisions tonight will be based on your conviction and not your consensus. There's much work to be done. I applaud you for at least making an attempt to make our schools safer, but there's another addage to that. It's also my concern that I work with my constituents and my communities to educate them, to educate their children, the dangers and the catastrophic that could happen when things are not thought out well. There is no guarantee that anything will stop anything if it's going to happen, but along with what you may or may not pass, I think you also need to go a little bit further and look at school social workers. We need more of them. Metal detectors, we need more of them. Clinical psychologists, to hear the referrals to them that may be made by the school social workers, other teachers, to probably rectify a problem before it happens. So I'm asking you to make sure, and one of the other things that concerns me is that is there a rush to do this tonight? If so, that's your decision. But I'm concerned about, we have not even passed the bill in the state legislature in regards to open carry, because there may be some concerns in that bill that may have an impact on what you may or may not pass tonight. So I thank you for your time. I hope that you look at this carefully, because just like an email, to a certain extent, once you send it, you can't bring it back. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Board. My name is Crystal Siskun, and I'm here speaking against this. I want to say that I, as a parent, have a real problem with any person being in the school with a weapon. I, in my faith, choose not to have weapons, choose to up path of peace, and I try to teach my children that. I understand, after the law was passed, that we had SROs installed into the schools for safety, and I have had my children through many times, as another person said, where the procedure worked and the students were safe. And I also am a victim of gun violence, a family member of mine, and I have to tell you that I 100% do not agree that we should be empowering a group of individuals determined by the police force after 147 hours to have a weapon around my child. I also would like to point out that a lot of people and cultures and groups in our county do not look at that as an added layer of safety. They in fact look at that as making the situation more unsafe, and that this resolution doesn't have to be determined tonight, and my personal opinion is, if you do this, also in light of this new open carry legislation that is coming, I will not send my children to school because it will not be safe, and I am not the only parent who feels that way, and I hope that you really take some time to do some deep investigation in the different committees that you have on the ramifications of this and why we would bring the police in to keep us safe rather than investing in mental health, teachers, and social workers. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Andrew White, Mike Deck, Gwen Gittens.
My name is Amanda Berry. I'm a former Lee County student and Lee County parent. My student graduated last year. Of course, I'm always concerned about my son's safety while he was in school and, of course, still am. I've had many concerns about his education and his safety over the course of his K-12 education, but I was never concerned whether, I was never concerned once whether there were enough guns in school. I have friends and family who were teachers. Many of them are concerned about their students' mental health, living conditions, and rigorous testing schedules, but not a single one of them would feel safer knowing that their staff and colleagues could be armed. I believe that this resolution is unnecessary. I believe that schools already have trained in armed ROs in every school and entrance barriers to every school, which does work. I believe that it's ineffective and causes more harm than good for the reasons that the doctor stated earlier. The risk of accident, unintended consequences, or weapons getting into the wrong hands is a much greater risk. And I believe there are far more effective methods of intervention that don't endanger children's mental health. There is, as I'm sure the doctor could speak to, correlations between mental health and just proximity to gunshots, whether or not a child actually even sees a gunshot. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. Thanks.
Good evening, Board. My name is Andrew White. I'm actually looking at the student representative right now, because to come full circle, I was the student representative for my school committee's board during Columbine. It was a horrible, horrible experience. I rise today to speak out against this resolution, and the reason why, I have a four-year-old who is in pre-K at Orangewood, and my wife is a teacher out at Veterans Park Academy. I know for an absolute certainty, the heart of teachers, you will find people who will gladly throw themselves in front of a bullet if you ask them to. So I'm saying to you, you know that that's the case. You are now asking them to. If we are at the point where you need to call up the posse and throw more guns at the situation, you are absolutely escalating this. You are saying to the teachers, please, be human shields. Please, accept the responsibility that you will have to shoot a child in your care. Please, go ahead, train for 140 hours on the realization that the kid you failed in math class, that you had such high hopes for, you will need to drill them through the head with a .38. I can tell you from Uvalde, more guns does not equal better control. Body armor, coordination, skills, all these things, we train and train and train, far beyond the standard that you're giving. And our law enforcement struggles with this matter. I say to you, bring more law enforcement in. Don't bring teachers in. Don't destroy the faith and trust that they have in their students. Don't turn them against each other. And secondarily, don't put targets on their backs, because there are kids who will steal anything from a teacher. There are kids who will assault a teacher, and there are kids who, if they decide to snap, will go straight for the teacher who has a gun in their desk and take them out first. This is full of peril, what is being considered. I ask that you accept and look at the human consequences that could happen if you ask a teacher to carry a gun. Thank you.
Sharon McGill. Since I attended the briefing in December regarding the Guardian program, I had been anticipating that something was going to come down the line. I assumed that you've been having executive sessions all along, but the word transparency has come up multiple times tonight, and this was not transparent. I saw this on the agenda last week, because I look at the agenda every time there's a meeting. But normally, parents are more concerned with looking at focus and what's going on with their kids. But when I reached out to the community, they were appalled. They had no idea that this was going on. It's just wrong that this wasn't brought before the community, before bringing it as a resolution for a vote. One of the most important things a district can do for the safety of our children is to mitigate and intervene before an act of violence takes place. That isn't the Guardian program. That just isn't. They're already in the school by that time, and who knows what could have happened by the time a Guardian even reached that person. You've talked about scanners and metal detectors in the schools. That's a proactive measure. You're keeping the weapons out of the school where the children can go and be safe. This is your opportunity to reach out to the public and really find out how they feel about this before you take a vote and make a decision. And as much as I respect Dr. Benir and his ability to bring this for a vote before the public even has an idea what the policy or the processes would be regarding it. I mean, I was getting tons of questions, like, do they take the guns home? Do they bring them back to the school the next day? Are they locked up at school? What happens? People want to know the answers to questions before they make decisions, informed decisions. So I really ask you that you table this resolution for tonight and get more community input. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Heidi Krassenstein, Ron Rankin, Robert Daniels.
Good evening. My dad was a police officer. I'm ex-military and a BFW lifetime member. I have a concealed carry, and I think, other than a highly-trained resource officer in school, this is a very bad idea. I'm not going to give you any more reasons than that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Heidi Krassenstein. I want to give you a little...
Heidi, yeah, there you go.
Sorry. When I was 18 years old, I started a job as a prison guard in a Wisconsin prison. Every year, we had to do weapons requalification. We had to do drug tests, and we had background checks done. And I can't load a gun. I can't shoot a gun. I passed that weapons recall every single year for three years. They were short-staffed. They passed me through because it was friends of mine that were doing the weapons requalification. So you guys will say they have 144 hours, they go through these tests. Don't trust me with the gun. I went through the same exact test that you guys are probably going to put these people through. You also said earlier, after someone spoke, saying that we might not comment on what you guys say, but we hear you, we listen, and all of you guys shook your heads. We do. You don't have one person backing this up right now, so if you really are listening to us, you'll do the right thing.
Thank you. Good evening again, Gwen Gittens. 144 hours, of which 12 are diversity, equity, and inclusion. I recall recently diversity, equity, and inclusion being taken out of schools, off the list, out of our minds, away from children. So my question is, what kind of cultural diversity and competency is going to be in these 12 hours? 144 hours, 12 diversity. 132, I guess, in gun safety and all that. The psychology part is a test, not a training. Not a training that says, like others have said, are you going to be willing to shoot and kill a student that you just spoke with in the hallway? That can create PTSD to the hilt. So more than just a psychological test to see if you pass the test, there are ways that you can get around that. The cultural piece I really do worry about, especially with the demographics of the students that may be involved in this. I would like to know, what are the results of the student-parent-community surveys and the town hall discussions that were held regarding this topic? I don't think there were any, unless I just missed it. I can't understand how you went directly to a resolution and not to a policy which would allow three public, at least three public comment sessions. And I was told by someone, well, but this is just to make sure and to see if it works, and then we'll do the policy. Your resolution says the sheriff may establish the program. That is not a wait-and-see. That is a program that will be in place. When I spoke before, I did not mean to offend anybody by saying that you don't listen, and I apologize if you took it that way, but what I did say, if you hear me, there's results. I know that you heard me, because either, if you're walking and I say, "Stop," and you hear me, you stop, because you don't know if there's danger ahead. If you hear me, it results. The litmus test is, something happens. Thank you.
Robert Daniels. I'll be the person now speaking in favor of this. 14 years ago, when I was in college studying to be a teacher, I lived in a guns-free apartment zone, down behind the Target by FGCU. On Super Bowl Sunday that year, I got to stand there and watch somebody try to come through my front door with an axe, and me and my roommates had nothing to defend ourselves. We were there with a guitar held upside down, a kitchen knife. That's all we had. Eight years ago, I moved into the city. Seven years ago, I was living across the street from Franklin Park Elementary. When about 1:00 in the morning, somebody tried to break into my house through my bedroom window. I was unarmed at that time. I drew a gun. I pointed it at them, and the attack stopped instantly. When I was on the phone with 911 the first time, I was told it would be 20 minutes for an officer to get to my front door. I had a roommate considering jumping out of a third-story window. We hear talk about teachers being willing to die for their students. Give me the shield. Give the administrator the gun. If you have people who are willing to live and protect the students, then yes, they're also going to be willing to live with the PTSD of taking out one child to save 30, 40, Those who are here who have expressed their fear of people having guns... I had my first gun when I was five. I've never thought they were a toy. I was properly educated, properly trained by my parents, my family. If our students are being properly told and educated about what guns are, as they used to be back in the '60s and '70s, they're not going to accidentally shoot someone. I've been in possession of a gun for the better part of the last 30 years of my life, especially since that night I had the first break-in attempt. I've never had a single misfire. The gun has never gone off. It's a machine. I can, with my single action, throw it across the room fully loaded. It will not go off unless someone pulls that trigger. This can be done safely. You're worried about the kids picking up a gun somewhere in the school? Keep them in biometric safe that needs the Guardian... Keep it in a biometric safe that needs the guardian's fingerprint unlock it instead of carry it on their person. When the lockdown goes on, they arm themselves, and they're instantly there. That's a way lot faster for the resource officers to have the backup they may need than the two, three, four, five, 30 minutes that it might take to get enough officers there otherwise, depending on where they are. And if you would like me to illustrate plans on how somebody could make it take 30 minutes to do a school attack, I'll do that privately because I would hate to be the person to plant the idea in someone's head on how they could successfully pull off a shooting with
Good evening. I Dick here. I am a resident of Lee County. I'm a father, and I serve with the U.S. Army in Operation Iraqi Freedom 2008. We have heard a lot of feelings here, but the reality is that feelings do not stop criminals, and criminals do not care about your feelings. There are a few facts that we should have cleared this evening. Number one, gun-free songs do not work. How is it that criminals have figured this out and gun-control advocates have not? Do you know where mass shootings do not happen? In police stations, in the gun range, in gun shows, you know, the places where everyone is armed. Every qualified staff member should have the choice to protect our children and themselves and have complete immunity against prosecution if they eliminate a school shooter. Teachers should also be included on this. Number two, we have plenty of already transidents, combat veterans, and former law enforcement teaching our children and working as staff members in schools today. Now, it is appalling to me that the same group of people praising staff members and teachers as smart heroes are the same group of people vilifying them, claiming that armed teachers and staff members are too dumb to manage a firearm. Number three, the police are scared of school shooters and will not protect our kids. This has been evident in the past school shootings, like Parkland School Shooting here in Florida, where the assigned school deputy walked up to the hallway door, and when he heard the gunshots, he retreated back to safety with his firearm. Also, the Uvalde School Shooting in Texas, where multiple law enforcement officers waited over an hour in the school hallway with their riot gear, long rifles, while the innocent children were being slaughtered 20 feet from them. They literally waited until the gunman ran out of ammo before they confronted him. This is not my opinion. These are facts and were cut, videotaped, and presented as evidence in court. The Parkland-assigned deputy was taken to court for these actions and was exonerated after the defense quoted the Supreme Court case, the Cheney v. Winnebago of 1989, where the Supreme Court ruled that it is not the duty of the police agencies to protect citizens from criminals, meaning that not a single law enforcement in this room and in the United States has the duty to protect citizens within their jurisdiction. The teachers that died in the shooting of Parkland High School did so when they acted as human shields to protect the innocent children in their class. I didn't know any of them, but as someone who has been shot at before, I can guarantee you one thing. I bet they wished they had a gun when they saw the shooter coming into their classroom.
Is Nancy Terari here? Nancy Terari? Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments. Board Member Mr. Fisher has made a motion to adopt the resolution on school safety, and it was properly seconded by Board Member Mrs. Langford Fleming. At this time, the floor is open for any discussion. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Persons. I want to thank everyone for coming out for their comments, for their emails. I really do appreciate it. As those on the board know, outside of being a board member, my other job is a father of three young kids in this district. Security and safety is something that is in my mind every day. In fact, I'm always checking between these meetings, the briefing, and the action meeting on what's going on with my kids. It's a constant fear, and it's something as one of our jobs up here is to keep my kids safe and everyone else's kids safe. There's a lot of things going on right now. I want to remind everyone first, this is a resolution. We're still working on stuff in regards to this program. It's a state program that's been implemented in, I believe, 46 out of the 67 counties. So this is not anything that is unique or novel within this state. So this is a tested program. So our sheriff supports this program, has been very supportive of it, and something that I believe we have a lot of faith in this sheriff in this county. These are highly trained. Again, we talked about the hours, but one of the things is, when it regards to this program, law enforcement still has to sign off on a person. Even if they get through this program in regards to all the training, the tests, they still have to sign off. If there is something, one little thing, that is not proper, they will not sign off on that, and I expect that of them, and they have relayed that to us. So I think that's a very important factor. So as well, volunteer. You know, as I said, I'm hoping, I would guess the rest of the board feels like this, but this is volunteer only. Nobody should be pushed into this. It should be only people that want to step up and do this. I want to make that clear. There will be no pressure from anyone up here in order to do that. So as I said, you know, security is something that is paramount. It is one of our top duties up here. I fully support the Guardian program. I fully support our law enforcement and our sheriffs, sheriff that will be implementing the training in regards to this. So we welcome any further feedback on this. Again, this is a resolution, so this is just the beginning of it. Thank you for listening, and thank you for everyone's comments.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
Thank you. I have actually been championing this Guardian program since the governor asked for it to, after the investigation, the governor put it in an order and brought the Guardian program into legislation. I actually spoke to a widow and a parent of their daughter that was lost in Parkland. And I asked them, just over the summer, no, excuse me, December, I asked them, what, would they, do they support the Guardian program? And they both told me they supported it. They told me that the one widow, she said if her husband ran back in to the shooter to try to protect the children and with no weapon, no defense, if he had had a gun that day, he would have been able to take the shooter out. That was very compelling for me because I had been championing it, but I was concerned over it, as many parents and other individuals are. And I think at this, we've, since then, even in our own Lee County, kids are scared every day because they don't know when it's going to be a swatting or if the swatting is really happening because it's happening often. So that extra shield of protection, to know that there's somebody else there, is a determinant that is really greatly needed. I do support and have been advocating since 2017, a year before Parkland, for metal detectors. It's 2022, or excuse me, 23, and we still don't have metal detectors. So it's scary because we need them. I know it's, I don't, I don't agree exactly how this resolution came about exactly because I do feel like that we needed to have more conversations, and the community needs to be aware of it. And that was something I did bring up actually the night before, I think, Sunday night. I sent an email asking, wait, are we circumventing the option of how we have policies and reviews three times? And, and thank you, Ms. Jordan, for bringing up, actually having the conversation so that people could have public comment on this because I was very concerned over that. I think we do, we need to have more conversations. But safety is the, in the foremost, the first thing and the most, the most important thing that we have to do is keep our children safe. And if this is one extra little piece, I'll feel better about that because I don't know that we can put a price, again, like I said, on safety and keeping our students, students safe. And I thank everyone that came and spoke against it and for it. I do understand where you're coming from, but I think that we have to do what's best for all students, and I think, and it is a choice. No one has to wear a gun. Teachers are not going to be made to carry a gun. It will be a choice, and I think that's really important. It's a choice. Thank you.
Mrs. Patrica.
Thank you. I don't see the mom here from Mariner. Did she leave? The one who was talking about the swatting incident. Hopefully, she'll watch later because this is sort of in response to her. The very first swatting call that we got was at South Fort Myers High School. My son is a sophomore at South Fort Myers High School. I was on social media, and I saw a post that said, 21 dead active shooter on campus. At the same time, I was receiving a text from my son that said, Mom, there's 21 dead on campus, and there's an active shooter on my campus. terrifying, absolutely terrifying. So I sit here as a parent that's been in those shoes, thinking that my kid was in a building with shots and, and other dead kids. There have since been other swatting incidents and other incidents on that campus, and I'm not nearly as afraid as I was before. Why? Because I guess, you know, I'm not, I've been conditioned, and unfortunately, you know, contrary to what Ms. Giavennelli just said, the kids are conditioned too. And I'm not hearing fear from them. I'm hearing, oh, boy, this is annoying. It's happening again. So I do think we need to address that and make sure that the kids are paying more attention. What I can tell you is, every time I've seen the reaction and the response from law enforcement in this area, I have been incredibly impressed. It is the complete opposite of what we saw at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and it is the complete opposite of what we saw in Uvalde. I see our sheriff's deputies running through halls with long guns, putting themselves in harm's way to save our children. In the same way that that training is taking place for our sheriff's deputies, it would be our sheriff who would be training our guardians. And I have, I have a lot of confidence in our sheriff and his ability to train people for this role. I have gone through an evolution in, in my thinking on the Guardian program. I was initially against it when it came out, when it first came out. Why? Because local law enforcement leaders were against it. We did not have a sheriff who supported it, and we did not have chiefs of police that supported it. That is different. We have the support of our sheriff now, number one. Number two, what I'm hearing is that our chiefs of police will get behind it depending on what's in the policy. And, and I am going to listen to our local law enforcement experts. I am not a law enforcement expert. I don't know how law enforcement works. I need to rely on experts when I'm making decisions. And if it is their sense that our schools will be safer with a guardian or guardians in our schools, who am I to say no to that? Because I'm afraid? Fear should not drive my decision-making. Anecdotal stories, like the one I started my comments with, also shouldn't dictate our decision-making. I told that story so that people in the audience understand. I'm a parent too. I'm not just making this decision without knowing what it feels like to have kids in our schools. I will say that, on a slightly different subject, hearing your comments and agreeing with them are sometimes different things. If this board decides differently than what the majority of the public comment is, that doesn't mean we didn't hear you. It means we don't necessarily agree with that. Finally, I don't know yet that I fully support this. Why? Because the policy has not come in front of the board. I don't know the details of the policy. The devil will be in the details. If a policy is written that I can support, you'll have a yes vote. If the policy is written that I can't support and law enforcement leaders can't support, I will not support that either. So right now, all we're doing is directing the superintendent to write those policies. And much of the conversation regarding transparency, I don't know how we can be more transparent than this. We're putting it on the table. Lee County, this is what we're doing. And there'll be all kinds of opportunity for public comment. As the, the policy process plays out, there will be decisions that will be made in executive session. We cannot tell the public everything we're doing because if we do, it will frustrate the purpose of the policy and the program in the first place. So I am sorry, I got emotional. That is so not like me, but obviously, it's an emotional topic for the, for the community. I wanted you to know where I stood on it. Thank you. Those are my comments. I'm sorry I went so long.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
First of all, I don't believe that we did bring this to the public soon enough. I felt that, and that was my question continuously, when do we bring this to the public? When do we have this conversation? I know this is inevitable. I am very much aware of that. And yes, there are many counties who actually do have the Guardian program. A lot, the most, the majority of them are smaller counties that do have them. But it is, it's very hard. This is very, very hard for me. Not because I'm afraid of guns. I do know that we, as a district, adhere to the statute. Like, we have these fine gentlemen up here in our room. The SROs are in our schools, they're protecting our children. And when we did have those swatting events at our schools, they were there. They were there to make sure that all of our children were protected. And it was not just the sheriff's office, it was the Cape Police, it was all of them. Fort Myers PD, everybody works together to make sure that all of our children are safe. So we do have those, we do have that going on in our schools. So I do feel very safe. And I'm speaking as they were, you know, everybody else was saying, they're kids, they have children. I have tons of grandchildren, as well as, you know, nephews and nieces, and of all colors. So, you know, and everybody looks at it in a different manner. We have to make sure that we are listening to what our constituents have to say and the community have to say because it does matter. It does really matter. And I know, to me, this resolution is, we're putting this resolution, bringing it on to start working on that policy and procedures, but I believe that we need to make sure that in doing so, that we do go out there and we get the information from the public on how they feel about, about this, about what we are doing up here because we represent all of them, you know, over 100,000 children. We represent them. And even with, you know, so I know that the public is concerned. I have, you know, my anxieties about this, but I do understand that, you know, the resolution stated that it is, you know, it is for the school board places, the safety of our students and staff as the highest priority. But we need to make sure that we also include the parents in this as well and, and the community because it's all about parental rights. So we need to make sure that everybody's rights are being heard. And we cannot, you know, of course, we cannot ignore the fact that there are, you know, there have been shootings, there have been tragedies. We get it. We hear it on the radio. We hear it on the TV. We hear it everywhere. And we're not immune by it. So we have to do the best that we can do for this. The Guardian program is going to serve as a force multiplier, not taking away, you know, the gentlemen and the women that we have protecting our schools right now and our children. This individual volunteer, and again, when they keep saying there's no price on safety, well, then let's pay. Let's continue to pay people. However, ours is, you know, again, it's, it's the force multiplier of the protection to enhance the safety and other layers of security in our schools to protect their children and staff. And not everyone's going to, you know, can be a guardian. They have to go through all the training. They have to pass all these evaluations, these testing. One lady that was out here spoke about that, how she passed it multiple times, and how she passed it, which was kind of scary to me. But again, the guardian is not, that person is not a law enforcement. So they have no arrest powers. They are just, they're there if and when an active shooter were to come on that campus. That's the, that's their only purpose there. And I know that, you know, the superintendent and the team's going to work closely with the, with the sheriff and the local law enforcement agencies. And I, truthfully, I would love to hear them tell us, tell the public that they are on board as well. That, to me, is really important, that we know, we're sitting here saying that they're on board, but I would love for them to come out and say, yes, I'm on board with this so that way we all are on the same page with this as we go forward. And again, you know, the sole purpose of this guardian is to prevent or abate the act of assailant in, on...
assailant on school premises. So, we are going to be charged with making sure that the policies and the procedures are where they need to be and look at every single aspect of that. And if by any chance that that is not what we, as a community, as a board, how we believe that it should be, then that will be the time to make a decision whether we, I personally would vote for or not. But again, I apologize to the public that we did not come out ahead of time, before today, to have these conversations.
Thank you. Ms. Laker Fleming.
Without risking repeating all the things that I agree with up here on the board, I too am a parent of three children, and every day, I'm reminded, I wish that this wasn't even something we had to talk about. I wish this was not on the table. I joke often with my children and tell them, "Oh, I wish that you could grow up in the '70s like I did." And we often have conversations about safety, not just in school, but their day-to-day life, going to the mall, going to the movies, getting out of the gas station. It's incredibly unfortunate that this is the world that we are living in, and it's not our children's fault. But as a board member and as a parent and as an elected official, it is my job to make sure that what I spoke about for 18 months is still my number-one priority, and that is student safety. It's also staff and faculty safety. And I was a teacher for 20 years, and I can tell you that there were times that, doing the duties that I had as a teacher, there were many times where something could have gone awry, and thank God it didn't, but it could have. I just want to reiterate that tonight is a resolution, and I will think long and hard about the policies that will be put in place before I vote on anything regards to the future of this program. I think that Ms. Jordan was correct when she said, "We have to work together with law enforcement." I agree with Board Member Patricia. I am not, I neither, I am not a law enforcement agent myself. These wonderful men and women that protect us day in and day out are, and I will be relying on their expertise when we move forward with this. I don't want to go any further. I know that we're going to have many discussions. I do want to just say one more thing, and that is, as these discussions happen and occur, please, please know that we are listening to you when you come to the board meeting, and we are hearing you. And I welcome public comment, and I welcome constituents coming. So, whether you agree or disagree, please listen to the board meetings as we proceed with these ideals. Please talk to community members. Please encourage them to email us with their concerns. I welcome all of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I was not going to support this, then I was going to support it. I think that it is a resolution. It's not a policy. I'm not happy that it's come to this, that we have to put people in the school, that we are even talking about putting people in the school with guns. I think that's all wrong. I think the focus is wrong. I think the focus needs to be on all of the preventative strategies, particularly with respect to staff training, student training, hardening, and providing the appropriate software in schools. I have not liked this program from the very beginning, but I understand that it is a referendum. I understand that I will have another opportunity to vote on this, and that opportunity will be with the policy. So, I will support it, but I want the public to understand that I am very uncomfortable moving forward with this resolution. Thank you.
A couple of things that probably should be addressed in addition to whatever things have been said. One, everyone says we're having great response from the Sheriff's Department. Yes, they did come, but it still takes a few minutes. Not having the force multiplier to back up the sheriff, the SRO that's there is like not having a defibrillator when someone has a heart attack and say, "Well, the EMTs, they'll be here very shortly." You know, minutes count. A lot of kids can be hurt very quickly in just a few minutes. Having that extra person might stall, might be able to, even if they don't take out the shooter, they might be able to contain him for a short time until, let's just call them the reinforcements arrive. And that could be huge. I think if I was a parent at any of these schools where the shootings have happened, I think if you polled all those parents, I think you would find that the majority of them said, "We wish we'd had something like this in our school." As far as the transparency, all of our safety is done in shade for various reasons. That's how it works the best. You're aware, there's things going on, and there's, but there are a lot of other things we're working on. I know we're also working on the social workers aspect. There's bills in the legislature this year to increase that, and that is very important. So, I'm in support of this program. We've all had our discussion. The motion was made by Mr. Fisher to accept the resolution, seconded by Mrs. Fleming. We will now vote. My screen went off, so you will... Yes, time to vote, please. Is this a roll call vote, or?
No, sir. He said it's a...
Yes. I am an "I" vote. Thank you.
Tell me, I need to log back in. Yes, please. And Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
The motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the attorney recommendations. Attorney DePauw Bruno, please present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the approval of the settlement offer for government entity claims against Jewel Labs, Inc., and authorization of the school board attorney and general counsel to execute all documents necessary to finalize the settlement. Due to ongoing negotiations, we cannot disclose numbers at this time. Numbers will be available once the negotiations are complete and the court approves the overall settlement, as this is a class action. And this recommendation is to allow the board to move forward in the settlement process for final approval of the court.
Thank you. You have heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves the settlement offer for government entity claims against Jewel Labs, Inc., and the authorization of the school board attorney and the general counsel to execute all documents necessary to finalize this settlement. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Jordan.
I move to approve, sorry, the settlement offer for the government entity claims against Jewel Labs, Inc.
No, second.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if you will record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We'll now move to the good of the order. I'm going to let our student representative go first.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking my school, the district student advisory committee, and all the board members present at today's meeting for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of myself and other students. My name is Juliana Bendek, and I'm a sophomore at Bonita Springs High School. Something I love about both our district and Bonita Springs High School is that it's very conducive to the needs of our students. Being a student who seeks to challenge myself academically, my school administration has been nothing short of supportive of me seeking out to take classes, regardless of their level, whether they be AP, ACE, or even dual enrollment. I'd also like to touch on some of the issues mentioned in today's meeting. Number one, it is in my opinion that the media which a minor consumes should be an issue between the parent and the child. By intervening with a third party, whether that be our school's administration or governor, this right is inherently being violated. Second of all, I also feel that students have the right to be seen in curriculum. As someone who has Hispanic, as someone who is of the Hispanic descent on my father's side and Middle Eastern descent on my mother's side, I have very rarely been felt, have ever felt included in our school's curriculum through our readings. Even speaking personally, I feel that if I were to give someone a map, whether that be like a fellow student or maybe even some of the adults here, and ask you to point to where the Middle East is, I don't think a lot of you would be able to. And I think that says a lot about how our education system works. I feel it would be in our best interest to support introducing the idea of diversity inclusion to students, whether we're talking about different cultures from Europe, Asia, Africa, anywhere, because everyone really deserves to be seen. Thirdly, I also wanted to touch on the issues presented by the Guardian program. It is in my opinion that the program is ignorant of the issues which result in gun violence. It's ignorant of what actually causes gun violence at our school. We're ignoring the issues, we're ignoring mental health, we're ignoring discrimination, we're ignoring gun control. We're not addressing issues which are bringing gun violence to our schools with this program. I argue that we are rather bringing the guns to our school. You've been told here today that you've been told, we've been telling anecdotes. That's not true. A doctor during the public speaking came out and gave you a list of statistics. She even offered to show you her citations. There's been concern in regards to the Second Amendment and this program. Teachers have the right to bear arms, right? However, we all have the right to the Second Amendment, but the Supreme Court has shown time and time over again that the Constitution is able to be changed, to be adapted, to meet what our society needs today. Marbury v. Madison, judicial review, judicial activism, those are all things that should be considered. It's not a black and white issue. It's not the Constitution says that or this. It's a document which can be adapted to meet our needs. I ask you one final question. What school shooter is going to wait 144 hours for the Guardian program? Thank you for your time. I really appreciate being given the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Juliana, for being here. Thank you for your viewpoints. If you choose to be an attorney in the future, I think you'll be excellent at closings, too. So, I do appreciate that. So, as I mentioned, I went to Read Across America, days at Hector Cafareta in Trafalgar. I had a great time reading some students. Also, as many of my board colleagues attended the Golden Apple Social. That was really cool. I really enjoyed that. That was my first. We had some various legislative luncheons with colleagues, and I'm excited to see where things are going, and I definitely feel that we, as a district, are being supported. So, I do appreciate that with our legislature. So, also, real quick, I did my board member message and kind of went down memory lane. For this new board, it's been about 100 days, and I kind of went through some of the things on there and to reflect, and it feels a whole lot longer than 100 days, so. But I do want to thank my colleagues here on the board, the superintendent, the administrators, the staff, the teachers, everyone. So, it's been a lot thrust upon this board to start with, and I think everyone has really worked their tail off. I really appreciate it. I appreciate, you know, as I said, the, how our board is acting, as I said. We don't always agree on everything, and that's all right. I love the diversity of opinions up here, and I think we're all really trying to do our best to better this district and to better everything for our students. So, I just want to say thank you to everyone, and it's been a great 100 days so far, and I'm looking forward to the next 100 days and so on. Thank you.
Ms. Giavanelle.
I'll keep mine short, too. I just want to thank everybody that came and spoke today and tonight. I think it was important that you were heard, and we did hear you, and so I respect that, and I respect the opinions of the community. Congratulations on 100 days, in your anniversary of that. I just didn't realize it's been 100 days, so congratulations. And I still actually have a couple more readings to do for, I don't know why, they're a week late from the Dr. Seuss birthday, but I still read the end of this week, so going to another school on Friday, I think it is. So, I already said some of my comments earlier today. I just wish, thank all the staff and all the hard work. It is almost 9 o'clock, 20 till 9, so I'll end it with that. Thank you.
Ms. Patricia.
Juliana, wow. That was really very moving and very, you made me stop and think. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for your willingness to speak openly in a room full of adults, which a lot of kids don't, not all kids feel comfortable doing. So, just thank you. May I direct a question through the chair, please?
Yes.
So, is there a way that we, I could ask the board attorney and the superintendent to somehow be prepared for tomorrow to discuss the adoption time issue that was raised today? I believe that's going to be part of our policy discussion tomorrow, and I would just, I know that it's super short notice, but is there any way to determine how other districts are handling this? What is the law on it? Is this, in private industry, I think the notion of not offering paid time for an adoption is kind of antiquated, but in terms, I don't know what it is in the public sector. So, if there's any way at all for us to be prepared for a discussion on this, I thought the person that came in front of us, the people that came in front of us today, I thought they raised a really good point. So, if there's a way we can talk about that tomorrow, I would appreciate it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I probably said enough, but I just want to say thank you so much. I felt every single thing you said. I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank Ida Baker. Ida Baker and Ms. Jones, who also has a beautiful voice and is a Golden Apple teacher. I really appreciate what she does with the kids. Thank you.
Ms. Laker Fleming.
Juliana, thank you for being here tonight. I would definitely not want to close against you like Board Member Fisher said. I wanted to say what a tremendous job Ida Baker did this afternoon in their performance, and hats off to the female weightlifting team. I asked one of them, I won't say which one, because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I asked her what her clean and snatch, or clean and jerk was, and she said she just did 185. So, that's, you can go look that up and see what you think that would feel like. And I'm always so impressed by our JROTC, and it's just such a great way to start the program, so thank you for that. Yes, I look forward to Dr. Seuss, more Dr. Seuss reading this week, and thank you for all of the people in the community that came out on all of the different topics tonight. Thank you to the staff, Lee County School District, for all that you do. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Actually, I have no comments this evening, other than to thank Juliana for her comments. Thank you.
And I too would like to thank you. Did a great job. Did a great job. The only comment I wanted to make was I got to read also to a bunch of kindergartners and first graders, and they were very attentive, very well behaved, and they can't guess age at all. When they asked me how old I was, I said, take a guess. Several of them said 100. But other than that, they were great, and I'm looking forward to reading some more And that ends our, that part. Board Attorney Bruno, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Juliana, I think I had an opportunity to see you at the mock trial competition. I have a feeling, and I know that Assistant School Board Attorney Shayna Zupke definitely saw you, because she was part of that organizing of the mock trial competition. So you guys did an awesome, awesome job, and I would love to have a conversation with you about the Constitution and Marbury versus Madison. I think I will learn something from you to be honest with you. So I wish you a lot of luck and best wishes in your career, and we're always a phone call away if you want to ask us any questions about the legal field.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Burmeyer, any comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll try to bring this together by starting with, I too had the opportunity to read, my thing was the Lorax. So the Lorax has the line of, I am Lorax, I speak for the trees. Juliana, thank you for speaking on behalf of the students of this district. I know there'll be other people in the community that have a difference of opinion, but you have the seat, and you have the microphone, and you spoke your mind, and that's what we need, is positive and reflective input, so that you can impact the decisions both that we make together and that we make separately in our own lives. So thank you for those comments this evening. To our board members' request, and just to swing back through the earlier part of our meeting, I had Mr. Dotick and Mr. Ramirez go out and meet with the adoptive parents. Their staff from our human relations, human resources team going out tomorrow to meet with them. To Mrs. Patrika's comment, we will do our very best to bring something forward. Keep in mind, though, that this is a collective bargaining agreement, so we have to be careful, and I need to converse with Mr. Dotick and the union, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Dotick to reach out tonight to prepare our conversation tomorrow. There are book and curriculum materials people, I know they're not here, well, some of them are still here. Some of them make it to the very end. First of all, to all the speakers, including Juliana, thank you for lending your voice. There's a curriculum board advisory meeting, which will be discussing this policy for public input on March 27th, 2023. I also had Dr. Spiro speak to several of the people who spoke tonight, provided that information, and he has follow-up numbers to talk with them tomorrow. Mr. Cruz, who spoke about his student who has an IEP, was visited after the meeting by Jennifer Cupid-McCoy. The principal of that school building, which has been identified now, is already reaching out to the parent this evening. Chief Nuland took care of the shields information. I assume he has contact information regarding the person who was talking about bulletproof shields. And to our teacher who is still here, I do want to remind the board, I do want to remind the board that there still is a zero option for single employees, that they don't have to pay anything, because you pay into that system on their behalf. I know that not everybody chooses that option, but there still is, for a single person, there is still an option, of which you pay the entire process and premium for that insurance. Last but not least, I would talk about proximity selections. Time is, time is moving. We're still about 30% of our talented community that we still really need to reach out and reach. What I mean by talented is they're difficult to reach. So we're getting very creative ideas from Mr. Malloy. I have to applaud our executive directors, our school principals. They're doing everything they humanly can to get ahold of these parents before the decision, before the close of the, the window this coming Friday. I mentioned the curriculum board advisory, and then I would also just say that part of the voice of this meeting is listening to the voice of the people who come to the podium. This board has been very reflective and very good about listening to people. I think a very important piece was said today about listening doesn't always equate to agreement. I just have been out on meeting with Spalk, Talc administrators in separate groups, small groups. I've started my process of meeting with our students for Student Voice. I've got Astero and Mariner under the belt, with more to come, and in the conversation with the students about building the ideal school system, what would they build? There have been opportunities where I've heard, but in my head I know that there's just, right now, no possibility with statute and rules that we could do those types of things that they're suggesting. Doesn't mean that it won't come to fruition over time. So, just really appreciate the opportunities this board has afforded me to be out of this office, in our school buildings, interacting with our children, our employees, to blend that voice and help all of us bring that voice to this table and into our private one-on-ones. So thank you for that opportunity, and I hope everybody has a great evening, and if you're here, please drive safe.
On Wednesday, March 8th, there will be a board workshop at 1:15. On Wednesday, March 22nd, there will be a board workshop at 12:00 PM, followed by a board special meeting at 1:15. And on Tuesday, March 28th, there'll be a board briefing at 1:00 PM, followed by board action meeting at 6:00 PM. Seeing no other business, come before this body and see no objection. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:50. Thank you.